Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, July seventeen, two thousand and seventeen at five P. M. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board in a joint meeting with the Library Board, which we're looking forward to in a few minutes. I'd like to call a meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Brenner?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Bally?
Here.
Udrow?
Here.
Satan?
Here, thank you. All present and accounted for. Item three A, we will hold on. Mr. Willie notified us he cannot be here right at five o'clock, so we will wait until later when he's here. So we go to three B, which is discussion of possible action, tax increment financing requests for facade improvements at Peaceful Heart and possible action. The recommended motion is to approve the facade improvement grant agreement for ten thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
The only, I did make one change on the agreement today was, we just added the the meeting dates when the site plans were approved, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, the agreement is the same, as in the packet.
Any discussions or questions? We've had this before, it's before.
So, I have a question, because it's ten thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of the total cost, right? So are we approving this up to ten thousand dollars, or do we know that the total cost is going to be the twenty-five percent of the total cost of me to exceed ten thousand?
Right, there's only ten thousand. They're asking for ten thousand dollars. They're saying five thousand dollars per facade.
Yeah, so is that twenty-five percent of the total project?
It is, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? John Adoris, did you need to say anything, or have you said enough?
(laughing).
Okay, I think you informed us well, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the facade improvement grant agreement for ten thousand dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. You're all set. Item C, from July tenth, board meeting, discussion of possible action, change to the premises description for Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse LLC alcohol beverage license. The recommended motion is to approve that change for Ziggy's for the alcohol beverage license.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So I will say that last week I had some current concerns, because I didn't understand where this was being placed in the building. I went over to Ziggy's after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And it's right, right in front of the register, in complete view of of Mike and and any of the staff that are working in the dining area, so I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay, thanks for doing that, Jeff.
Anything else? He's for the motion to second to approve the change to premises description for Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse LLC alcohol beverage license. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So we're at the point of meeting with the Library Board, which we would like to come and sit along the chairs here, please.
Thanks, guys.
(laughing).
We could flip it up and it can be the village attorney tonight, right? Your nameplate.
So, welcome to the Library Board. We appreciate having you here. We are at the point of roll call for the Library Board.
Severson?
Present.
Spats? Glasser?
Here.
Bustler?
Here.
So, Tui Shuda?
Here.
Thank you.
And you should, you should call Carpenter.
Jeannie Carpenter, I'm sorry, here.
Okay, so that puts us at item six on our agenda. Joint meeting with the Library Board, review of information from the Library Board on the new library building. Item A is Library Board's presentation of requests and information, so we'll turn that over to whoever's doing that.
Sure, that's going to.
Dr. Bustler.
That's going to be me. My name's Brian Bustler. I, I think most of you know me via my day job and my night job, and I've also had the opportunity for over a decade to be on the Oregon Library Board. And I want to say thank you to the current Village trustees for, first of all, having Darlene Grenier with us as a board member emeritus now, but she spent a lot of time working on Library Board issues. And then also a thank you to Jeannie Carpenter. She's been spending this year with us. And before we make our presentation, I will just turn to my right and ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, so you can connect a name and a face together. And we'll start with Kyle.
Wonderful. Thank you. My name is Kyle Severson. I've been on the Library Board since January, so I'm currently the newest member, although I understand that's going to change shortly. I joined the, the Library Board because I saw an opportunity for the, for the village to create a, a space, a space that would attract not only people within the village, but those that are currently just outside the village, that are using other villages' library systems. And I certainly believe in, in the power of the library and, and the charter and the mission of what we're trying to accomplish. So, happy to be here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Santulli Shuda. I think I'm the second longest member of the Library Board, second to Dr. Bustler, I believe. And I joined, I don't even know when's. I don't, I bet you Steve doesn't even remember, but my family has used the library since we moved here in nineteen ninety-nine, and, and our daughter just loved it as, as a small child, and, and I am an avid book lover, so I just love the library, and that's why I'm on the board.
I'm Bob Glosser. I've been on the Library Board a couple of years. I've been a volunteer at the library for, I don't know, five or six years now. So, that's my background. I moved here and married a longtime resident in two thousand and ten.
Thanks to all of you for your service, and we welcome you here.
Well, thank you. We have a document that's in your packet. I think it is listed as six A.
Yep.
So, we, the good news is, we're not going to read that document to you. We're just going to give you a general overview. I hope one thing that you've already noticed and heard from my colleagues is the strong commitment that all of us have to reading and to the use of the library as a community hub in, in our community. We are beyond excited at the possibility of being in a situation where we can construct a new library. The library we currently have has served our community exceptionally well, but we'll also say it's small, and we need some improvements, and are ecstatic about the possibility of the improvements. In terms of the first question that was, was shared with us from the village, on a preferred location for a new library, obviously, we are all in favor of the former Methodist Church site on North Main for a new library. We've also heard a few concerns from community members, as we look at it in a comprehensive way, due to traffic and perhaps general access, but we also think engineers can work through that, and the community will get used to the, the library in, in that area. In terms of the second question, the Oregon Library Pl, Library Board is very interested in working collaboratively with all of you in selecting an architect to design the new library. Once an architect is selected, we think we'll have a better proposed schedule. We took a really rough draft at looking at a schedule. Again, we're not married to it, but we tried our best to provide you with an answer and a response to what a schedule might look like. You'll notice a, a sample timeline for the design piece, probably a little over twelve months. Again, we're very optimistic people, so we put November of two thousand and seventeen. Don't misread that in the sense that that is not a demand, that is just our exuberance coming out and wanting to start as quickly as we can. The second piece, library and village, working as partners, and working as partners to revise the plan, have a final approval, approval. Again, none of us are licensed architects or engineers, so we know that we'll have to go through a process, but we assigned a couple of months to that. We know the bidding process is critically important, and one thing that I've learned from school projects, bidding in that January or February timeframe really gives us the opportunity to get the most cost-effective prices. So, irregardless of the year that we were to go to bid, we think if the construction industry continues as it has been, that January to February timeline is best. We gave you a construction estimate based on, I'll say, similar library projects in some of our peer communities with Verona and Fitchburg, and that's been in that twelve to maybe at the high end fifteen months. And then the move in, because we're obviously continuing to operate a library, is going to take us about a, about a month. Again, these are estimates, and we've used, we should have identif, oh, we did identify it. SCLS is South Central Library System, and that's a group that we are partnered with in Madison, and they've provided a lot of services to us, including strategic planning. They've helped us hire Nikki, so we give them great thumbs up on that, and they're a great service provider to us. When we look at question number three, the library building's total square footage needs, we went back and looked at some research that the Village of Oregon did back in two thousand and fifteen, when you hired Epstein Ewan, an architectural firm, to conduct a needs analysis. We learned from that study that Epstein Ewan reported a projected two hundred and forty percent increase in the size of the need for a library by the year two thousand and thirty. Now, I'll be honest, in my mind, picturing a two hundred and forty percent increase is really difficult to turn that into square footage, but we rely on the experts, and that, that projection translated into about a thirty-five thousand square foot new library. Of course, this won't come as a surprise. We support Epstein Ewan's findings. We don't know if we're going to grow quite by two hundred and forty percent, but the one thing we've learned are, the group before us did their very best work at putting together a great library, and we've grown a lot. And we are concerned about building the right-sized library that's going to serve the community well into the future. On item number four, which is the total cost of the library, we believe that hiring the architectural firm is, will be instrumental in helping us identify the cost. The projected cost estimate needs to be reliable, so that you feel comfortable with it, our community feels comfortable with it, and that it's reflective and realistic in a current construction market. Having been involved in a number of school projects, those construction costs can fluctuate dramatically, and we really don't know exactly what it's going to cost until the day we bid. But of course, there's a challenge. We have to secure financing, and we have to set a budget estimate and then work within that budget estimate. Based on some information that we've received from South Central Library System, we divided the cost estimates into six different areas. First, a cost for a feasibility study, a cost for a fundraising study, because we've always made the assumption that with a new library, we would do some fundraising in the community. We don't have details on that yet, although we've had a few firms reach out to us that specialize in fundraising. We also know the architectural and design fees are a significant cost, and then, of course, the largest cost is under section D with construction costs. And that construction cost can vary widely based on market conditions. We think if we are able to do a bid document sometime in January and February, of course, under the guidance of a general contractor and an architectural firm, that's going to yield the best possible cost on a project. Item E is, I'll call it your bailiwick. There's some municipal considerations with utility extensions, some paving, some curb and gutter, et cetera. I'm guessing, since this is a pro, a, what I'd call a partnership project, there's some things that we can work out there in a super-cost-effective manner. And then item F is project contingency, and those are some additional funds that we want to allocate on the front end in the event we have some cost challenges or some soil boring related, related issues. Again, in a big-picture ballpark estimate, we believe a library would cost, a library of thirty-five thousand square feet would cost in that ten to twelve million dollar range. But far more important than the ultimate cost of the library is making sure that it meets the needs of the community, making sure that it has the support of the community, and obviously, making sure that we're working as partners with the Village of Oregon on this. I also documented a couple of additional points that I'll say are, are more my view, although I'll invite any of my fellow board members to, to comment on them as well. First, the Library Board is a strong, in strong support of a new library. It, it is unanimous on, on our board. Also, we as the board are, we don't want to do this alone. We don't want to plan this in a vacuum. We don't want to, we don't have an idea in our mind of what the library should look like. We, we are committed to working collaboratively with the village on, on a new library. Third, in our strategic plan, we've always referred to the library as a community hub. We really believe it to be a community hub, almost, in my words, a focal point within our community. We think the Methodist Church property gives us that focal point and, and that center of our community. And then lastly, we know this journey starts with a step, but it's going to take a lot of steps to be able to walk through the doors of that new library. It's a long path. It's going to take a great deal of time, some money, a lot of patience, a lot of listening, understanding, balancing out the community needs, what's affordable, but we think that investment of time, energy, and money will result in a library that our community is very, very proud of. I will turn to my colleagues and see if they have any items they'd like to underscore or mention that I did not mention.
I think Steve, I think you covered it very well, Dr. Bustler.
Yeah. The, the one thing I don't think that was brought up was this, South Central Library System has, well, as you probably already know this, but they have guidelines for how big a library should be based on population, and we're gonna probably cross that threshold pretty soon, and they're real essential to our, to our well-being financially and, and others' types of support as well. But otherwise, yeah, I was totally covered. Thank you. And I'll just say a couple of words. Oftentimes, when people think of the library, they think of the, the circulation or the books on the, on the shelves, and libraries have really changed. Libraries have transformed, and we talked about them being a community hub. The most common users they're finding in libraries these days are millennials, and entrepreneurs are two of the top groups that are using libraries, and you can imagine the importance of, of those individuals in the tax base in any community as, as that community grows. So we're, we're, we're thinking about this from a, not only from the circulation, and we, we know that we have a lot of avid readers that we want to support, but how else does the community support, or how else does the library support the community? And there are many ways, and so I just want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about the library from that aspect as we're considering funding a new space.
Thank you. That was very thorough. That's what we're hoping to hear.
So you would give me a good grade on that principal statement?
I would, yeah. Yeah, I would, yeah. I was taking notes here, we'll talk later.
Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions you have, and maybe just before you toss out your first question, the other piece that's really crucially important for you to understand, and I know you feel this way, because you oversee a, a number of municipal employees as well, but our library staff has been outstanding over the decades and continues to be outstanding. That's going to be a critical part, because we can build a marvelous facility that looks tremendous, and if we don't have the right people within that facility interacting with our community, it's all for naught. And we are in a great situation. We've hired a terrific new leader, and Nikki has done a marvelous job. She has the complete and unwavering support of the Library Board, as all the library staff have, and it's important for you to hear from us on that, because the personnel side of this new library is just as important as the construction side.
Yeah, I have the honor every fall of going to the employee appreciation luncheon, and every department functions that same way. They're all strong, and I would say, tonight specifically with the library, I'm not there a lot, but I'm there on occasion, and using it more, and checking out books, because my wife tells me I should be checking out books and not buying them, so we have too many. So, I'm down there a fair amount, and the staff does a great job. And in that line, I would encourage residents who are not using the library as this project's going forward to go down, use the library, try it out, and, and it's so much more than books, and that community hub, the connections in the community are what I see as the heart of a library and the impact it has on the community, and I'm very pleased our library is doing that, and has the opportunity to do that even more so in a new facility. So we're at item B, which is joint discussion by the two boards, so questions, comments, either way, going back and forth. Jerry?
Yes. Dr. Bustler, has the Library Board discussed any level of participation in the fundraising? I know you brought up fundraising, but has a level of fundraising been projected? Because the next step for the village will be to determine a, a, how much the borrowing will cost.
We haven't talked about details, and we don't have a detailed plan. We would like to use some of our funds to do a feasibility study.
Okay.
Because we want it to be well-thought-out and well-planned, and not just jump into a fundraising proposal or plan without a target.
I agree.
And without really a strategic approach to it. And since none of us are currently fundraisers, we think we need some professional advice with that.
I would agree. I would agree. Thank you very much. As, when you discuss studies, is a traffic study in the plan, too? Because you mentioned that that site could be problematic for traffic.
We've talked about doing a traffic study. We didn't know if that was a bit, if that was better to do it in cooperation with the village, or if it would be better for us to do it on our own. It, it seems like in my school day job, we are always looking at traffic patterns at schools, and I, I think it's critically important, because we're going to have a significant, we anticipate significant use of this new facility, just like we have significant use now, and we would want to get that ironed out, because it's a main artery in the village.
All right. Thank you. Those were my questions.
That was also a question neighbors had also, as far as what happens with the traffic patterns and so on, so.
I can't.
It's a lot to work on how we look at that.
I can comment. At the last, last board meeting, we didn't have any neighbors that attended, but we have, we know we have several support groups supporting the library, but we have a special support group of the neighborhood, and we've had anywhere from two to almost ten people coming to the meetings, encouraging us and saying, we're in, we would be a neighbor to the Methodist Church, the former Methodist Church site, and we want you to know that we are in favor of it, and we will help support you in the process. And having lots of experience on public projects, I always like to hear that, because we never know if we're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
So, just to kind of loop, loop in some information we already have, Mr. Slavney, as part of his recommendation, looked at traffic patterns, and he had some comments to make that were very positive relative to the flexibility and the option that we have to deal with the traffic. He didn't see that as being an issue.
Right, because, because there were two senior housing projects that have been proposed since two thousand and eight, that the developers actually looked at that as well. So there are some things we'd have to do if, no matter what building is, is built on there, we'd have to do in that area.
So I think it's important for the audience, because some of this stuff is hard to bring back into the conversation, because it happens months ago, but for the audience to stay current, I think it's important to know that, that, that this has been looked at, that we have some information, that this isn't catching us off guard at all. This was considered before Mr. Slavney made his recommendation, and yeah, it needs to be worked through.
Yeah.
But it's already had at least a cursory look and a blessing from the village planner.
Great.
Questions, comments, other trustees?
Mike, do you have some, can you give everyone some idea of what the next steps in this process are?
Well, I, I tried to put them on the agenda, and I'm not saying this is the right way to do, but I, I know I've been talking to Nikki about, at some point, having this building committee, but I think before we do the building committee, I think there's a step before that, which is that we would form a ad hoc committee of, of Library Board members and Village Board members to work on the memorandum of understanding. And then once that's, once that's in place, then to me, I would turn the project over to the, to the building committee that Nikki's been talking about. I'm not saying that's right, but we've had pretty good success doing these ad hoc committees. You, you, you come together, whatever time period, and you, you meet, and you hammer out the MOU, and then once that's done, both, both parties sign it, and then we can really get going on the project.
So I have one more comment to make, if I could, and I apologize if I'm taking you backwards.
That's okay.
But my, my memory of this project and Mr. Slavney's comments is also that a project of this size and scope has a tendency to raise home values in the immediate area, and I believe that this will be a boon for Market Street, which has by and large been neglected for redevelopment in the Village of Oregon for as long as I've been here. So, as far as the neighbors go, I think the neighbors can look forward to a rejuvenation of their neighborhood and, and this project truly adding value to them, as opposed to creating problems or detracting from their experience.
And that whole area is all part of the newly.
To five.
To five, right.
Yeah. So we're getting ready.
Mm-hmm.
For the demand that's gonna come.
Yep.
When this project goes.
Could you, Mike, could you talk a bit about how the capital improvement plan will fit into the feasibility study?
So the, the board gave me the, their authority, whatever, to go back and try to revise the initial draft of the CIP to try to lessen the impact on the, the tax levy. And with Lisa's help, I have done that, which I'm going to present to the, to department heads tomorrow, to department head meeting. I want them to look at it, have one, one more meeting with them, and then I'm gonna give it to Jim Mann to update his, his charts, his tables, and then he's coming on August twenty-first to then review that with the Village Board.
If Jeff Rock could stop buying equipment, that'd go a long way. This project.
So, I'm not sure everyone's gonna be happy of what I'm proposing, but it's my, it's my attempt to try to, as I say in the, I'm working on a cover memo or PowerPoint, to try to lessen the tax spike or shock that, yeah, we talked about when we first saw the initial draft of it. So I'm trying to reduce that over the next five or six years.
Thank you.
Sure.
So going back, but I had a question on, what's the plan for community involvement in terms of planning the library? How do we, are we getting input from the public throughout the village, or?
Yes. Yes, we've talked, we've talked about it as the Library Board, and the picture that's in our head, not a firm picture, but the picture is to identify a, a building committee first, so we have a leadership group. Once we have that leadership group, we are interested in doing some public meetings and engaging the community. We could go as far as doing some survey work with, within the community, but we think having an architect, doing some public meetings, engaging the community, so they know exactly what A, it would look like, how it would lay out on the property, and then, of course, one of the key parts, all the programming. The South Central Wisconsin Library System can help us on the programming parts, but there are certainly going to be some unique programming parts to the Village of Oregon, and that we would like, we would like for it to be stakeholder-driven.
Okay, good. Yeah, I know the last two referendums a school district has done, which you led, I think had a two-thirds yes vote right at that level, which is unheard of for the most part, and I think that was because of the, the amount of information out there and the openness of school administrators to get information to people, so.
And that.
We're pleased that you have the background to work the Library Board on, and this happened. Not that this has to be voted on by the public, but the information out there will be very important to people going forward as far as a response to it.
Our plan is to engage the community.
Yeah.
And, and engage the community from day one, keep them involved in the processes we work through, and come up with a plan, a programming plan and a facility plan that everyone supports.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jerry? I'm sorry.
Yeah. We actually already have one community member who is, lives on North Main Street, who has signed on and has begun to get himself familiarized with the library and the way it operates and so on.
And engage the community from day one, keep them involved in the processes we work through, and come up with a plan, a programming plan and a facility plan that everyone supports.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jerry? I'm sorry.
Yeah. We actually already have one community member who lives on North Main Street, who has signed on and has begun to get himself familiarized with the library and the way it operates and so on. So we have a little kernel there and we hope to build on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, in the past, when we've had committees for various purposes, we do often try and pull in at least one member just from the general public to serve on the committee too.
Yeah, okay.
And so, in addition, Nikki's been holding listening sessions now for several months, I think. And I have a feeling that the new library and the needs that the residents are feeling have been a central part of those sessions.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
So you had alluded to this, Dr. Bustler, November timeframe. Nikki had been talking about it really for probably the better part of a year. But I feel like November's coming fast. And I know that there's some requirements that have to be met while we get to the warning track so that we can keep South Central Wisconsin Library System engaged at the financial level that they're at right now. So without necessarily committing to November 2017 as a start date, if you will, for this process, but knowing that November 2017 is an important date for this process to start, at what point do we feel that we're going to be able to get that down on paper as the kickoff of the project? So that we can, so that we can keep South Central Wisconsin Library System engaged in what we're doing and take advantage of the funds that we currently have?
So the board has to, the village board, sorry, has to make a decision on the location and the size of the, or projected size of the building. So I think once those two decisions have been made, then we form the ad hoc committee. And the committee, I mean, depending how fast the village board makes those decisions, we can start doing that as soon as we can after August 21st.
So as long as we make that decision, then we've met the requirement?
Well, not the next, that'd be a good question for Nikki to answer. But I mean, I think, I think my impression is that we have to demonstrate that we're making a movement towards a new building.
Do you have thoughts to share, Nikki?
Yeah.
Take your choice.
Except you can't use mine, I'm using it.
I think that the Dane County Library Standards, to which I believe you're referring, do not have a specific date tied to them. It's more based on the population at a given time. So it depends on where we're at population-wise, when we would enter into the next category as far as expectations go. However, it is not, it's an algorithm, it's a formula, it involves a number of different factors. And so I don't think it's going to come down hatchet-like at any one particular date. But I think it's something that we do need to be very mindful of insofar as its impact goes for local taxpayers.
If I just say one thing, the only thing is you've got to remember, if we borrow $8 million and we pay debt service on that for 20 or 40 years, the money we get from the Dane County Service, no offense, is a drop in the bucket. So, and I've told this to Nikki, that should not be a driving force, the financial. I think we need to do this where we're in compliance with their standards, but the financial comparison is not, it's not even in the same ballpark, in my opinion.
Yeah, so that's a really good point that you're making in terms of, at what point should we commit to the borrowing? If we're going to back up from there, I guess my question would be, at what point do they consider the project started? And is it fair to say that if we've identified the land and that we formed the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, the November date, Jeff, is that we have to spend some of that library impact fees money by then, otherwise we have to refund it.
So is it fair to say that those actions by the village board would qualify alone? Or are there additional actions? Not going all the way to the other extreme, which is actually borrowing the money because we know what we're going to do, but coming way, way back to the beginning and saying, where exactly is the beginning by definition as far as the stakeholders are concerned?
I have to say, I don't have my copy of the Dane County Standards on me. But if I recall correctly, it's related to when construction begins. However, as I try to keep saying, I don't think it's going to, I don't think we're going to hit that kind of, I don't think we're going to bump up against that because the formula uses population numbers, the actual population level. So the higher we get into, you know, when we hit 10,000, it's going to use the number 10,000. When we hit 12,000, it's going to use the number 12,000. So it's not going to come down and hit us in one moment because we've made a lot of those adjustments with the step plan. There's no particular square footage requirement for the Dane County Standards. It's how many materials we have, how many staff, et cetera.
So the work you've been doing with the step plan in terms of increasing FTE and things of that nature is helping to move the needle in the right direction?
Correct. Where we are moving in the right direction, and I feel very good about that and very grateful to the library and village boards for supporting that. So I think we have a little bit of, I don't want to say wiggle room, because we are at capacity currently. So the challenges will be, how do we have a safe library environment and have all the materials we need in that will be?
Yeah, the challenge is, how do we keep adding materials when there's no place to put them?
Right.
So we can meet, we can meet the standards because we purchased the materials.
Right.
But if they're sitting in boxes in a storage unit, I'm not sure what purpose that serves. That's my, that's my fear.
And just to clarify, I think there's a couple of deadlines that we're bumping up against. The more immediate one that Mike Grace mentioned is the fall of 2017, spending those impact fees before we have to return them. So that's, that's the most immediate concern. As I understand it, the Dane County Standards, what we're looking at trying to be in place for is 2020 because that's when the next census comes out. And that's when we anticipate we will hit that next population level.
So is it possible, do you think, for us to maybe sit down and take a look at the beginning of this project? Impact fees are total about $200,000 right now?
We have $254,000 without interest somewhere in that ballpark. And we have to spend 107, 107 by November.
So it might be helpful for us to take into consideration the beginning of the project as almost a separate project with its own timeline? And the end time being November of 2017 and the budget being 164,000? And then backing down into today and figuring out, how do we get to there? How do we get to spend 164,000 by November of 2017?
107.
How do we get to spend 100, thank you, $107,000 by November of 2017 as we move in this direction?
If the village board agrees with the library board, that's where the library should be built and the library board releases impact fees, that's how we do it.
So step one is the village board has to vote on the location of the library, right?
Yep.
And step two, and from step two forward to whatever, however many numbers of steps there are, as we get to November of 2017, ultimately spends that budget of 107,000?
Yep.
Another consideration, Jeff and board members, that I'll toss out, and I will be the first to admit that I understand school finance. I do not understand village and municipal finance. But a consideration that we've talked about on the board is, we believe we will need a budget in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $75,000 to engage an architect so we can start some preliminary planning. Now, as we envision that preliminary planning with an architect, we would envision, you know, one or possibly two village board members sitting on that building committee with us so we can use those funds to begin that planning and feasibility process. I liked what Mike said earlier in terms of sort of step one is hammering out that ad hoc, or the ad hoc committee, hammering out the memorandum of understanding. I think we can accomplish that quickly. And then step two, identifying the building committee. And then something we've talked about as a library board, going through a process to select the architect so we can come back to you with more realistic cost expenses. And we're looking at, how are we going to be able to allocate some of that $50,000 to $75,000 for those, for that architectural fee? Again, in my head, and perhaps my head only, not understanding impact fees, not understanding all of those details, we see that as a source of funding for the architectural fee.
Yep. So I actually, taking your comments and these other comments and writing them down, step one is the village board voting on a location. Step two is the creation of the ad hoc committee.
I'm sorry, and size of the library. I mean, at least a ballpark, you know, range or comfort zone.
Step two is...
When will we do that, by the way?
Starting at the August 21st meeting, when you see the CIP with Jim Mann.
Okay.
Yeah, I should maybe jump in for a minute right now. We'll do no motions tonight. When the motions come, Matt will write those for us based on our discussions of what they need to be to make this all work.
So August 21st, we vote on location and size.
Well, you have your, you may not vote that very night, but that's your initial discussion, Jeff. And you may vote that night, it's a possibility. I'm not trying to interrupt you, but I'm just...
That's okay. There's nothing wrong with your recommendation that that vote might come at a later date. The only thing is it does is it compresses how fast we have to work on the other steps that need to take place before we can get to our deadline of November 17. So let's say on or around August 21st.
Sure.
We vote on the location and the size. The next step is the creation of the ad hoc committee and the MOU, which would be done by Mike and the library board. The next step is the creation of a building committee, which I'm guessing would be done by, in conjunction between Mike and the library board.
You could have that, you could have that identified in the MOU, who's going to be, I mean, just ballparking.
Then the next step is you spend $50,000 to $75,000 before November of 2017 on an architect.
You may not have to do that. If the village board decides that's a location of the library and the library board releases the money, then you will have spent the money by November of 17, 2017.
So if on or around August 21st, the village board decides that that's going to be the location of the library, then we don't have any concerns about spending the money that we need to spend before November of 2017.
Right.
Well, there's a timeline.
The only thing I would, I would say is that because there's other impact fee money and the state keeps changing the rules, as we know, I would ask the library board, and maybe that's what Brian is suggesting, to use some of those impact fees for this study. And just start spending the money before we have to, you know, they change the rules on this again, you might as well start using it.
So for a project of this size, I'm not a project manager, but I know what project managers do and I know how important it is to have them on board. And I appreciate what you did, Dr. Bustler, in terms of sort of laying out and hypothetical, this is what a project might look like. But since we only meet on these subjects every week, I'm just very sensitive to the fact that seven days goes by before we make our next decision. And sometimes a month goes by before we make our next decision. And when you're clipping off that kind of time in between conversations, you can go pretty far, pretty fast, and lose track of where you're at relative to the project. And so I'm just very sensitive to that. Now, I personally am a jump off the diving board and then ask if there's water in the pool kind of guy. And there's a ton of place for that.
We've never noticed that, Jeff.
So I'm trying to slow myself down and actually think in steps. And I'm finding it a little bit difficult, actually, because, because even in this short conversation, coming out of this meeting, we can't really necessarily agree to what the step is going to be beyond the next step, August 21st add or around.
I think the thing that will drive it is when you look at the CIP and you look at all the other things the village has to borrow for, and you're going to look at the place Ryve got, the potential borrowing for the library, is that what the board's going to agree on? Maybe it's going to be earlier or later. I mean, I think that's what's going to drive, then you can work the schedule backwards from there, Jeff. You really need to look at the CIP. Borrowing that money is going to, if it wasn't that type of money, it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But if we're going to borrow that kind of money, you're going to have to fit it into many, many situations. You know, how it affects other projects in the village, the tax levy, and things like that. So I think that's what's going to be, that's why I'm saying, I think you've really got to decide on location. And again, a ballpark range of the size of the building. And then I think everything else is going to fall in after that.
Yeah, I really appreciate your sensitivity to the CIP and your focus on the impact on the taxpayer. There's one thing that's been consistent in my time here, you are very passionate about balancing the needs of the village against the impact on the taxpayer. And I think that's really, really smart fiscal management. And that said, I think it's fair to say that it's not a matter of if this is a project we're going to do, it's a matter of how.
Yep.
And so even when we do see the CIP, we're going to figure it out in a way that balances the needs of the taxpayer against the needs of the growing village.
I agree. Yep, I agree.
So to follow up with that, where, since I've never done a budget before with the village, when do we start that process? So that as we're talking about how the library and the CIP are going to impact taxes, we're also thinking about the budget process and the changes that we need to make and how that will also impact the tax base.
So when we showed the board, Jim Mann's analysis of the initial, Jim Mann, our financial advisor, the initial draft CIP, we showed you the impact of the debt service and operating. We combined it and said on an average house, taxes would go up this amount. So we're going to do the same thing in August.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd like to challenge the village board, I think we've heard enough and deliberated enough on the Methodist Church property and the rest of the village and where possible locations could be. I've said before, we contracted Mr. Slavney, he's got 25 years' experience, he spent 500 hours studying this project, which I'm not even going to come close to that. I would like to challenge this board to mentally be in a position to where they know which way they would vote on August 21st so that we can get this step behind us.
I just have a question. Okay, say, say we're going to have the Methodist Church, okay. But maybe, maybe not. Maybe we'll do where they are now in large and put maybe the senior center and the library together. Would that make a lot of difference? And price-wise? Because that we have bought that land at the Methodist Church, they will have to, now will the library have to pay that month back then? I'm not sure, so that's why I'm asking.
So, well, so we bought the property.
Right.
The village board could say that as part of the library project, if you put that building up there, that's part of the total project cost. You could say that. I think actually trustee Balick brought it up when we were buying the property. You could say that. There's, if the library goes up there, we're proposing as a potential project to do a brand-new senior center with senior housing on Park Street. And in the TIF plan, we're showing, you know, eight to nine million dollar value, which would then give you the value that we lost by buying the property and not having a project up there. So there's a number of options. And I think what Jeff is asking is that, you know, between now and August 21st, you think of those things and be ready to possibly make a motion that night.
Okay, thank you.
It's a possibility, yeah.
Mike, I think it's going to depend if we've got all the information we need to make that decision.
Yeah, you may not at that meeting, yeah.
So, I mean, I...
It'd be the first time you see the draft CIP, and again, you may not agree what I'm proposing.
And we may need to, you know, CIP is just a moving target. We need to move some projects around.
And I will say that I'm going to, one of the things I have in my cover memo is that, you know, every year you're going to come here and adjust the CIP.
Right. If not, more often.
Yep.
You know, depending on our, the village's needs are.
Right.
But I, I think, you know, at the end of the day, as you like to say, that this project will get started on time.
Yep.
We'll use the impact fees on time and the library will get done in a timely matter. I don't hesitate to be even concerned about that.
So if I could ask you some pointed questions to help Mike, what questions do you have in your mind right now that you'd like Mike to prepare the answers for that he could start to give us over the next month?
The big thing would be the report from Jim Mann, yeah.
Yeah. So what you're talking about is whether we can afford the total cost?
No, how much we can afford.
How much we can afford to build a library?
Well, how much we're willing to spend without spiking the tax.
Right. So in your mind, what's the...
And jeopardizing other projects.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What's the connection between that and the location, in your mind?
What's the...
What's the connection between how much we're willing to spend and the location, in your mind?
I don't have any concerns about the location. It's just a matter of the village, Mike, having that on an agenda and the village board voting on it.
And all we would be voting on, on August 21st would be the location?
If, I'm going to put both as action items on the agenda.
Both what?
The location and the size, just in case you want to do both motions at night.
Yeah, once we determine that location, we can start using impact fees.
So the connection is the size of the library as it relates to the cost of the library? If you don't know what costs we're willing to take on, then you can't agree to what size you're willing to build.
Again, why do we need the input from Jim Mann? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So how fast can we get, um, Jim Mann's input? Is August twenty first the soonest we're going to be able to get those numbers?
That, that's when he can come, yeah. And I, and I want to, I haven't even talked to the department heads about the revised CIP. Like I said, I'm going to start tomorrow and then I want to have a, a special department head meeting at the beginning of August. I want them to look at it and give me their feedback over a couple of weeks.
So Jim Mann. That brings up something I want to stress, is that the library is one, one department. We have four others, too. And let's not lose sight of them as we talk about the library. I mean, a library, new building is a very important thing, but we have other department heads that are listening and watching and thinking, too. And, and that's why we need that capital improvement plan to see where, moving them forward, because they have needs also. It may not be a new building, but they have needs also in each department that they have to have. And so it's not just the library, nothing else. It's, in my mind, it's all those departments. How's that fit and how's that affect the taxpayer? Not, not just the library and taxpayer, but it's the, it's the whole picture, because we are, the whole village is five departments, not just one.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if we go back a few weeks ago to Jim Mann's report, he gave us a report on the, um, on the tax levy.
Mm-hmm.
And he projected it out for ten or fifteen years.
Mm-hmm.
How does that report inform your conversation about how much money we can borrow?
I'm, what I, what we did was, um, so we, Jim gave us that, that chart, that table. And then what Lisa and I did at the, at a subsequent meeting is we focused on the next five or six years. And we, and then we said, well, the, the library, we borrowed from the library and the senior center. At that point, it's a senior center at this point. And we were trying to look out, like, two years after, what happened to the taxes? And that's when the taxes spiked. So with the, with the revised CIP, I'm trying to not have that much of a spike as we did with the original CIP. And I'll, I'll show you on a chart, I'll compare that, you know, saying, well, we, we're going to borrow twenty-six million dollars over here. And with the revised CIP, we're going to borrow whatever, I can't remember what it is, the number of millions of dollars. This is the impact on your, on the levy in year twenty, I think it was twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, Jeff.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, you had mentioned that, uh, we'll do the CIP discussion on eight twenty-one, because that's when Jim Mann can be here. Is there any way we can get the information before that night, so we can have a good amount of time to dig through it?
It depends when he gets it to me.
Because he requests it or?
I, I mean, let's see here, I could try to get it to you, like, maybe a, a week before that.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, okay, okay. I can, we can try to get him to do that.
Other comments or questions, anyone?
Uh, one thing that Dr. Bustler brought up was, and he, he didn't mention it, but he wrote it in his report, was the ability of the village to build, um, future growth space in, in the building. Um, one thing that I, that I would consider would be, there's a, there's a distance between us and twenty thirty. And right now, we've been talking about building a thirty-five thousand square foot library. But at points, we discussed with Mr. Slavney, the possibility that you could build a shell that might be thirty-five thousand square feet, but only finish off the square footage that you would need today. So in effect, build a twenty-year shell would finish off a ten-year space. That, that would change some of the, some of the math, math on the borrowing. So I think that there's a lever there that we can play with.
Yeah, I do, too. That's why we may not, probably can't make that decision at the next meeting, when Jim Mann presents, because there's going to be a lot of stuff to digest there and a lot of things to look at going forward, exactly how that all fits together. I, I know there will be for me.
But we can determine where the location will be.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yep.
I think we have.
I think we have, too.
Another thing to think about with the space, Jeff, is that, um, we're asking the library to make room for re, re-hosting or the, repurposing the senior center and possibly the village hall, while we rebuild those buildings. So it might not be empty space or shell, shelf, shelf space, but it may need to be finished in case we need to host, temporary host other departments.
Yep.
So keep, keep that in mind. The village, or the library board has talked about that and wants to be a partner with the village board on that. Um, there is some concern of how, how do we work with an architect to, to design that space? So that it's usable, but then in the future, it can also be used by the library. So that will be, that will be a challenge, I think.
It's a good challenge.
Yeah, it's a good point, Jeff, thanks. Anything else, library board?
We appreciate the opportunity. We know how busy, uh, your board is, and to give us an opportunity to share our ideas and thoughts about a new community library is exciting. And to hear from all of you, your level of interest is also inspiring and will keep us working. We know this is a long journey and a long path, but working together, we can make it happen.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
And I think you, you set a tone of collaboration. I think that's what has kind of highlighted this discussion tonight, the way that's gone. I think it's a great start, so that's good. We'll look forward to continuing that.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the library board needs to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
This is a nice feeling, being able to leave a meeting early.
It's about ten o'clock, right?
Okay, Brad is back there now. Busy workday, so we'll go back to three A, please, on the front page. Good evening, Brad. No, that's all right. I'm going to, I have to read through this item.
Sure. Yeah, I woke up in the forest, the Arapahoe Forest in the Rocky Mountains this morning. So it was a, we left at one o'clock in the morning and drove all the way here, so I haven't even been home yet, so.
You look pretty chipper for that.
Yeah, it was fun.
Okay, so the item is discussion of possible action regarding First Amendment to agreement to undertake, uh, development of Willie Properties LLC project two thousand sixteen at seven forty-eight Cusack Parkway. The recommended motion is to approve the First Amendment to the agreement for the Willie project, extending completion date from July thirty-one, two thousand seventeen to July thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, just to explain.
Yeah, okay. So we just want to extend it because, um, obviously, we, we've had a lot of rain and stuff and, um, just finalizing the financing right now with it, with the banks. We have, uh, two offers, working on a third. I've just been gone the past week and a half, um, so I haven't really had time to finish that. So we're all good. Um, the, uh, site work, they wanted to start pushing dirt the, this week, but we got a lot of rain since I've been gone, so they didn't, there's a compactor already parked on site, so we're, we're ready to go. It's just not going to be done by July thirty-first of this month.
Okay.
And I suggested to Brad, rather than, you know, going out four or five months and then, and then coming back in, I said, just ask for a year.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. And with all the rain we've been getting and with winter coming, or fall coming in the next couple of months, I mean, it, 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 I agree, it just seemed to make sense to ask for more time. Because if we have to pay to heat concrete and stuff and that, that's no good, so.
Yeah. Okay, any questions or comments?
Uh, Jeff, I just had a thought as I was out there looking at the low, low, low-lying areas. Is there any, um, possible use for the dirt from Lerner Park to fill in some of these low spots and perhaps on this project?
The Keller Alpine Park over there?
Oh, I'm sorry, Keller Alpine?
We've offered it and.
Yeah, but I've, uh, taken my site work guy to that. He looked at it, he doesn't think it's good enough for the building site. He thinks it's good enough for the parking lot. So he didn't want to take any yet until we kind of got the building site figured out. But, yeah, it's.
Please take all you can.
Sure.
All you've got your hands on.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we want to see the piles go away, too. I think it's, it's a, it's a win-win. It's very close for you and it helps us, you know, since we're not sure of the schedule of Keller Alpine.
Yeah.
We're not doing that now this, next year, as I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to, I want to take it, too. I mean, it's, the price is right.
Right.
The site work guy, he just said he, he doesn't know if it's good enough for the building itself. But he, he thinks it's good enough for the parking lot, so.
Yeah, it should be fine for a parking lot, yeah.
So we'll probably take it for that, but, um, and they did, uh, soil borings a couple of weeks ago there, too. So we're, we're moving right along, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? So we have the motion to approve, and second, to approve the First Amendment to the agreement for the Willie project, extending completion date from July thirty-one, two thousand seventeen to July thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're all set.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah, I might go to bed now. Yeah, the, I've never been out there, and I've never seen the stars so clear in my life. Even, like, uh, um, well, Philmont, I think being further north and the elevation was higher, it's just beautiful out there.
The mountains are great.
Where were you at, Brad?
Uh, the Arapahoe Forest. So if you go out seventy, um, it's kind of north and south of Interstate seventy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, kind of Summit County and, it, it's a huge forest. One of my buddies got married out there, so it, it was pretty neat.
Sounds like a nice trip.
Yeah, it was fun.
Good.
The drive wasn't, though.
That's pretty boring, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Okay, item nine is approve of vouchers. Uh, we have vouchers tonight in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
I had to look several times to be sure that was the right number.
Yeah. Because there's got to be a bigger number someplace. When you have meetings every week, that's what happens.
Are there questions?
I have a question on the, Nikki left, so I hope, maybe Lisa can answer this. What is stop-motion animation?
Are these the? It's a video.
Yeah, it's.
It's a video that you take, instead of like having continuity, it's, uh, you take a picture and then you adjust whatever your picture, your picture is about, and then you take another picture and, and then it makes a little.
Yeah, you take twenty, since it goes at twenty-eight frames per second.
Oh, is that?
You, yeah, since normal viewing takes twenty-eight frames per second, if you take twenty-eight pictures, you've recorded one second of, of movie. It's the same claymation, does the same thing.
I think I remember Nikki getting a.
It's a, it's a program that the library offers that they have equipment and stuff like for that.
I think she got a grant, actually, to do that, and she just contracted with a local contractor.
Yeah.
So what this is probably is a pass-through of grant money.
It's a Frank, very soon, yeah.
Frank Caruso.
Can, can you confirm that it's a pass-through of grant money?
Isn't it a payment to Frank Caruso?
It is. It is.
But I think she got a grant from outside and Frank is the one that did it.
Well, but doesn't that programming cost come through the friends of the library anyway? The friends pay for all the programming.
Well, that was my next question. Why is it going to an individual?
Oh, well, because he is considered to be a national expert in that field.
Okay, all right, so he's like the contractor.
Yeah, and so the amount, I think we paid him sixteen hundred dollars.
It is sixteen hundred dollars, yeah.
Yeah, so Jerry, he's, that, that work would be worth like ten times that.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't doubt that. I just was trying, I was trying to wrap my head around how this was all coming together.
Yeah, I think that's something that he does all over the nation, and he did that at a very reduced cost for the Oregon Library.
All right, I got it.
Yeah, he's my neighbor, so I talk to him a lot.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
So maybe a packer at one?
I don't know. But I was, I thought that was a pretty nice amount.
That's great.
Because I think he did seven workshops with, with kids. It was, I thought that was a pretty good deal, for sure.
Steve, who seconded that, we, we didn't hear.
Jenna.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so we have vouchers, around thirteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents for approval. Roll call, please.
Balick?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Purnear?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Bret Howard?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you. Item ten is community input. Would anyone in the audience wish to address the board? See one coming forward from the crowd?
Punch your way to the crowd.
Yes, just a quick thank you for Summerfest. Thank you, everybody, and on the board and helping us make this a, a nice event. We did have to postpone fireworks till Friday night, but it really went well, so we did okay. So thank you.
I think the thank you is for you.
Yeah.
You do a great job with it together, and I also really like the way you make it such a community focus. It's been a really nice way of going, yeah.
Thank you.
Item eleven, proclamations and announcements. First is any board comments?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. On Thursday, we had the Beehive, uh, cutting of the ribbon, and their building is just excellent. Uh, it, we had a nice show-off for them, and they had broads and, uh, door prizes and everything. It was just excellent. The, if, if you have time, you should go out there to see it. It's a very, very nice building.
I'm afraid they'd keep me.
That's okay, Jerry, that, we'll, we'll let you stay there.
We'll visit you.
You might like it out there.
It is, it is a nice building.
I'd like.
Darlene's right, it is.
As long as I get to leave, I'm probably okay with seeing it.
Yeah.
Any other board comments, Jeff?
So I just wanted to let everybody know that we finally have all the permitting, uh, in place and the ground is moving over at the food pantry building. Uh, so you're going to start to see some, um, some construction work accelerating over time and it's going to start to get exciting out there. So stop by if you haven't seen it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just go out of, item B, staff comments?
I, I just made a note that we're, the village hall will be closed from seven-thirty and the one PM this Thursday for, uh, safety training with our, our new consultant.
Thank you.
And then I just have the, the meeting dates listed under there, so.
Our upcoming meeting dates, so just please verify those, we're all set. Item twelve, communication miscellaneous business, discussion of village president pointing Randy Way to police board of commissioners for a term expiring two thousand twenty-one, there's no action required. Um, Randy noted in his application that he was on the village board for six years, uh, member of the fire department, teacher at M A T C and so on, so I think he'd be a very strong member. My wife is on that and she said get some young people, too, so Randy stepped forward, so he's all set, okay. Item B, discussion of possible action regarding requests for proposals for banking services. Uh, recommended motion is to approve sending out requests for proposal to the following banks. BMO Harris Bank, N A, McFarland State Bank, Monona State Bank, Old National Bank, Oregon Community Bank and Trust, State Bank and Trust Plains, and Union Bank and Trust.
So because I work for McFarland State Bank, I'm actually going to step away from the table and I'll be in the audience until you're finished with discussion and action.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments here, Lisa?
What?
I don't have anything to say unless somebody has a question about.
I was just going to ask if the, um, you considered including credit unions in your, um, sending request for, uh, sending it out?
We have a, we have a list of approved banks that we work with, and I don't believe there's any credit unions on it.
We, we actually decided that to sort of keep the list somewhat not reduced. I mean, we want to make sure we send to all the, the local banks. I mean, I think on that list, there's like twenty, maybe, maybe more than twenty banks. And that, that would be very hard to try to read through all of our P, so we're, we're trying to, but we do not have credit unions on there.
There's, so there's none on that group.
I don't think so, and I don't know, I don't, I don't remember what the state statute exactly says, but I don't know if they're an approved banking institution that we can even use.
Right.
Is it a consolidate, is it going to lead to a consolidation of services through one bank or a smaller number of banks?
No, it's just going to replace who we're currently using.
So we're not, we're not sending, unless the board tells us to do, we're not sending our P to Chase, for example. That's, that's our local, that's our current bank, excuse me, so.
I was just like the auditor, uh, contract, it's a good idea to switch once.
We, we, we've been with them, um, I think Steve became village president, we, oh, six or oh, seven or that was.
I think this is the 10th year.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a long time. And, and I will say that we've been happy with Chase. We're not leaving because of service, but we, we just think now that the, the local banks, the, when we went, it was back 10 years ago. Some, some of the local banks technology, you know, wise could not, could not match what Chase was doing. Now, we, we think the local banks can do that. Or, I'm not just local, but the other banks listed under can do that, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, swear the motion is second to approve sending out the request for proposal to the following banks. BMO Harris Bank, McFarland State Bank, Monona State Bank, Old National Bank, Oregon Community Bank and Trust, State Bank across Plains, and Union Bank and Trust. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So six, zero, one. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Item C, discussion possible action, review of quarterly financial statements by the village board. There's a note here from Mike. At a previous board meeting, it was requested village staff review the quarterly finance report with the board focusing on line items, the five percent or greater variance. It was his understanding, the board requests the staff to provide a written explanation for each variance. He'd like to discuss this request with the board. Please note the enclosed general fund report shows the village is 50% through the year and both general fund revenues and expenditures are under 50%.
So I believe this was my comment, if it's all right, I'd like to just tell you what I was thinking.
Sure.
So it was really in response to the auditor's findings. Um, and there was two things that I picked up that I thought we could do something with immediately. One of them was the training of staff to help the staff get more and more comfortable with financials and financial reporting. And you can go back to the auditor's findings and plug that information in.
Sure.
Then the second thing was, uh, in my past boards, I have asked for a presentation at the monthly board meeting that shows variance to budget.
Sure.
And so that would be month over month, um, on the year.
Yep.
In excess of 5%. And the purpose of that was to help me be aware of, of where the spending is either exceeding or far falling short of, primarily exceeding budget so that I can ask better questions as the months go on to prepare Lisa potentially for having to do a budget amendment. If I don't have that information upfront, then I don't find out any sooner than Lisa that we ended up the year over budget and I can't help support her. So those are my thoughts.
Good, thank you. Um, so we used to do that at, at quarterly finance committee meetings. We used to sit down with the finance committee and go through that. We haven't had, uh, committee meetings because, um, just to have a meeting just for that, I'm not sure the board would be excited about doing that. So if you want, we'd be happy to, um, put this on. Is, is it okay to get quarterly reports on this at a board meeting?
Just information only in the packet would be fine. And then if I have a question, I can ask Lisa and otherwise I just know.
And the biggest thing, Jeff, was, was actually having the staff have to write out for every item, you know, actually do a narrative on each item that was over 5%. Um, I mean, we can, we can hit, hit the highlight of, of some of them, but it, it would take some time to do that.
Yeah, I don't need a narrative.
Okay.
But if I was to ask Lisa, hey Lisa, can you tell me about this general ledger that's 20% over for the month? And Lisa couldn't tell me, I would hope that she'd be able to go back, find out and come back the next month. But my also, my hope would be that in the course of preparing for the meeting, Lisa would have already looked at those items and prepared her thoughts in the event that I had a question.
And, and we, we do that between the two of us. We'll, we'll go to that, you know, like, for example, I'll be, I'll give you an example. We're, we're concerned about the legal budget. Even though we're, we're balanced at this point, the legal budget's over. And we just got done talking to the library board, we're going to end up hiring Matt to help us on the MOU, so we're going to even go over budget. But we're, we're down on some other areas, so it's, it's sort of balancing out at this point. So that'd be one thing that we're, well, that's actually one, funny, we always track is, is the legal fund.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you, Jeff. I understand you want.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yep.
So that we have no action on that, right?
No, no, no.
Okay. So item D, review of 2018 proposed budget schedule?
Yeah, so if you could, uh, I mean, I should wait for Jerry to come back, because we gotta look at our calendars here. It's, it's mainly the, to look, actually, I want to have the board look at that September 18th meeting. We, uh, um, actually, I'm, I'm waiting for Jerry to come back. I was going to, of course, repeat myself here. You, you want to do?
We can go ahead on some stuff, right?
Yeah, we can do E.
Yeah, E, uh, information only, adding a lurch banner to the village webpage.
To make sure the board knew we were doing that. So something that Joey brought to our attention, I thought was really a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, another way of getting, getting news out.
Yeah, okay. And item 13, report of committees, there are none. Item 14, minutes not requiring action, uh, June 1, 2017, Oregon Area Fire EMS Commission Meeting. Item 15, unfinished business, there is none. Uh, item 16, new business, approval of pending new operator licenses approved by the police department, Mahan's Liquor, Samantha Lyon. So we need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, approval of pending renewal operator licenses approved by police department, there are none. We have some future agenda items coming our way. We can't do 18 yet because we have to go back to, oh, D. So look at our calendars while we're doing that.
Yeah, see, we can look at, make sure those October meeting dates work.
So October 31st, I'm sorry, October 23rd, I have a conflict.
You do?
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait a second. I don't know what date I have a conflict on. October 18th.
That's a, that's a dive with no water, right?
I tried.
Don't forget everything, Jeff.
I tried to keep the meetings on Mondays, but, um, that's, that's the week that.
Yeah, I know. So I wouldn't be able to get here till about, um, 6:15, 6:30 that day.
Well, we could, um, I, I just picked the 18th at, there is, there's a conflict of another board member on the 16th, so, um, we could do it on, on Tuesday or Thursday.
I can do the 17th, or I can do the 19th.
I can't do it on a Tuesday night.
Or I can do the 20th.
I'm sorry, Darlene, I didn't hear, Darlene, you can't do it on Thursday, you said, or Tuesday?
Tuesday night.
Oh, Tuesday. You, or you want to, you want to move to the 19th, Thursday night?
What, what are we talking about? I, I lost track.
Okay, so, so look at the, the budget schedule. So Jeff is saying that the second meeting on October 18th.
Okay.
That he has a conflict, so I'm saying, can we just move, move it to the 19th, the very next night?
That, that works for me.
Yeah, me too.
I wouldn't be there for that.
Oh, because you have the county board, yeah, okay.
I can do the 20th.
Friday night.
That's a Friday. I can't do that Friday. I'll be up north.
So, and in, okay.
Do we want to go back to the week before, October, October 19th, October 11th, that Wednesday?
Yeah, we could do, we could try to do two, yeah, that's true, we could try doing two.
I just have a standing conflict on Wednesdays.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Well, you said you could come later that day, right?
I can be here by 6:15, 6:30.
Could we just do later?
Are you okay with that? Oh, yeah.
Are you okay with that? But you'll miss, it'd be like over an hour of the meeting.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I guess I was suggesting push the meeting back.
Oh, I see, oh.
So that we could, if the day works for everybody, just start later and then, if that would work.
Up to the board?
These are usually, what, three-hour meetings you, we try to do them? So just know that, Jen, it's, it's usually a three, three and a half hour meeting. I'm fine with that, but.
So start at six to nine?
I'd rather try to go a week earlier and leave it at five.
So, so Darlene, I'm sorry, you said you can't make Thursday nights?
I can't make Tuesday nights.
Tuesday night, I'm sorry.
Tuesday nights. But why, why don't we go back to Monday? Why don't we have that on a Monday night?
On the 16th? I have a conflict there.
Or what about the 12th?
Yeah, the 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think Lisa's idea, how about, how about five o'clock on the 12th?
Is that a Monday night?
Oh, Thursday night.
That's fine with me.
Should work.
Okay.
It's on the 12th?
Yep, 5:00 PM, second budget meeting. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that schedule?
Oh, then I, I would do want to mention one thing. Um, is everyone going to be here on September 18th? We're, we're going to try something a little new this year on the budget.
September 18th?
Yeah, it's a Monday.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Yep. So what we're going to do is we're going to, Lisa and I, before we make any changes to the budget, we're going to give that, the budget, well, not the whole budget, excuse me, we're going to give the board that, that Excel tax levy sheet that we do to show you, you know, because we're, you know, we're doing labor negotiations with the police department. Those numbers will be in there. Uh, the fire department is giving us a pretty interesting number. And there's other things that we want to do next year, and I think we're going to give the board that and say, okay, this is, this is what it is before I make any adjustments to it, before you see it again, just to get your feedback on it. And then you can tell us, no, keep it the way it is, reduce it or whatever at that point. So it'd be important that, if you can, to be here on the 18th, so, okay.
I'm not quite sure that day. I think I'll be in Montana, but I'm not sure.
It's going to be hard, we're going to have to do it that night because for us to then get the, the budget out to the board on the 6th, we really.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have to unfortunately do it that night, Darlene, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget dates? Kind of lock those in, we got them set. Which takes us down to item 18, right? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.